Good evening, everyone. Let us bow our heads in a word of prayer, please. Most holy and everlasting Father, we thank you for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for all our citizens that have gathered here today. We ask you to continue to bless Orangeburg, keep us safe, keep us in your will. And while we're praying, we want to, we ask your prayers upon Angie Stone's family. Continue to bless them and keep them. In your name we pray, amen. Before we go to our agenda, we would like to amend our agenda to, to receive legal advice regarding grant appropriation in executive session, so we would like someone to make the motion so we can amend the agenda.
Motion to amend the agenda?
Motion has been made by Councilman Kalu.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you. Our first item here is consideration of February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five city council minutes.
Move for passage.
And most have been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kalu, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, eyes have, the motion is carried. The recognition of March community of character trait is cooperation. Cooperation is the process of working together to the same end. And we're going to ask all our citizens to adopt, to adopt this, the character trait cooperation, and let's try to demonstrate it in the March, month of March. Okay, we have an appearance from Ms. Shanika Akins, the SAFE organization. And we're going to ask her to come, and anybody in her group, and state your name and your address, please.
Good evening, Mayor Butler, to the lady and gentlemen of the council.
Good evening.
My name is Shanika Aiken, and you want my address, right?
Yes.
It's five seven one Medway Drive, Orangeburg, South Carolina, two nine one one eight. I present to you our Youth Advisory Council on tonight. It is our mission and journey to be able to bring our young people to see leadership within our county, to give them a clear picture of what leadership looks like, so that they too can aspire to be leaders within the, within the community as well as in school. So tonight I have our Youth Advisory Council, they're going to present to you on tonight, and then I'll come back with the last few minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Councilwoman Strowman, Councilwoman Kalu, Councilwoman Kit, Mayor Butler, Councilwoman Hannah, and Councilwoman Grievous. It is very nice to see you all tonight. My name is Jada Milhouse, and I am a senior at the High School for Health Professions, and I am also the president of the Youth Advisory Council for the SAFE organization. The SAFE organization promotes self-esteem, advocacy, faith, and education in the lives of today's youth, and it has personally affected me. SAFE has helped me learn how to work better with others and how to become a much better leader. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is, oh, I'm sorry. My name is Janee Everett. I am fourteen years old, and I'm in ninth grade at High School for Health and Professions. When I grow up, I want to be in cosmetology nurse, I mean, not cosmetology, I want to be a CNA nurse, and for my side job, I want to do cosmetologist. Being a secretary in the youth advisory, it's taught me self-respect, and it taught, taught me to open myself up. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Alasha Hamilton. I am fourteen and attending William J. Clark Middle School. I attend the SAFE organization. The SAFE organization has benefited me a lot. It also has helped me grow. I am more open, and we learn about how to manage ourselves and communicate more.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kirsten Thomas. I'm thirteen, I'm in the seventh grade, and I attend William J. Clark Middle School. I aspire to be a psychologist or a children therapist, there, children or teenager therapist. I'm a fundraiser coordinator for the SAFE organization. The SAFE organization has taught me how to be a better leader and how to better work with others. I am extremely grateful to have this opportunity to be a part of the SAFE organization.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's give them a hand. Again, Mayor Butler, ladies and gentlemen of the council, we want to say thank you so very much for your unwavering support that has been toward the SAFE organization. We extremely grateful for all that you have done for us. The SAFE organization has been a vital resource hub for the youth in Orangeburg County, fostering self-esteem, advocacy, faith, and education through impactful initiatives like our No Texting and Driving Campaign, our Anti-Bullying Rally and Walk, Love is Respect Day, Teenage Pregnancy Prevention, and our signature event, Girl Empowerment Day. We continue to inspire, encourage, and educate, and uplift our youth across the community. Our ongoing programs provide consistent support and personal development opportunities, such as Girl Circle, which is a safe space for elementary and middle school girls to express themselves, build confidence, and form positive relationships. Our Youth Advisory Council, which you see tonight, we equip young women with leadership skills, speaking, public speaking skills, excuse me, opportunities for meaningful community impact through service learning projects. Lastly, we, we also have a young, we just started a Young Women's Bible Study, which is a four to six-week journey exploring inspirational women of the Bible, guiding participants to discover their unique strengths and apply valuable life lessons. We are also excited to announce, in my thirty-six minutes left, for our upcoming Women and Girls Empowerment Weekend, which will be June the twenty-seventh through the twenty-fifth. This powerful weekend will feature a benefits concert benefiting the youth of the SAFE organization. It will be held at the Stevenson Auditorium, and we will have an empowerment summit on that Saturday, which will be held at Claflin Uni, on the campus of Claflin University. Again, we would like to say thank you to the councilmen and women, Mayor Butler, for your continued support and partnership that you have played in helping us shape a better future for our youth, and again, we say thank you.
We would like to just thank them, isn't that wonderful? It's so inspiring to see these young women and see Ms. Aiken, how she's helped mold and shape in their lives, because that's what they need. Thank you so much. At this time, we will have an appearance by Mr. Cecil Williams, Civil Rights Museum. We're going to ask him to come and state his name and his address, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Butler.
Good evening.
Honorable council, city council persons, I'm very happy to be here tonight. My name is Cecil Williams, eighteen sixty-five Lake Drive, Orangeburg, South Carolina. And I have tonight with me my beautiful wife over there, who's too shy to come up here, but, let me see. But I'm, I'm the bearer tonight of good news. I bring you good news because I believe that, based on our research we've done, and of course, my presentation is on behalf of the beautiful, magnificent builders coming up at the Railroad Corner in Orangeburg.
Yes.
That is a, I'm, I'm calling it a joint eventually, I guess, between the city and the county, and of course, our museum, because our museum will be contributing about twenty million dollar, no, I'm sorry, ten million dollars in artifacts, documents, and images. You see, that's a very important part of any museum, your, your collections of what you present. But I'm the bearer of good news because, based on the information we have, we're going to be adding twenty-two million dollars to the city of Orangeburg, County of Orangeburg in the year from twenty, twenty-six to twenty-seven. That's based on our projection that if we occupy the museum, say, like, November, December, and I'm saying the beginning of the year, twenty-six through December, we're gonna, we, we project that we will be adding twenty-two million dollars to the city and the County of Orangeburg. And I forgot to recognize my fellow citizens, so please excuse me, again, fellow citizens of Orangeburg. Now, we base this information on this. A MIT study a number of years ago did a, a, some, a survey of Interstate twenty-six and exit one forty-five coming into Orangeburg. They estimated about five years ago that a hundred thousand cars pass Interstate twenty-six at that exit, passing Orangeburg between Columbia and Charleston. Now, given that, I think it has increased since then, because if you've been on Interstate twenty-six, you know how hard it is, how hard it is to get to Columbia, or get, get to Charleston. Either way, again, we, we feel there's more. But anyway, we are taking a very, again, minimal amount out of those one hundred thousand cars passing there daily. Annually, we're going to try to get two hundred thousand visitors per year. And sixty percent of them will be daytime visitors to the museum, to see the history we have, to see the collections we have, to see the history that not only is our museum exhibiting civil rights history and human rights history, but we also are reclaiming some of the lost history that should belong to the state of South Carolina. So this is another thing that we're reaching out as a museum, as a new museum. Not only will we, we be just a museum, again, in Orangeburg, we will be the newest museum in America. So we're going to shout that loud and clear, we'll have advertising, and we are so excited about that. Now, if sixty percent of the people we pulling to Orangeburg are, date, will be visiting and just not staying overnight, forty percent of the visitors, we will be coming in Orangeburg, will stay overnight, and that's added revenue to our hotel, our motels, hotels, restaurants, and other businesses in Orangeburg. Now, we do need a little bit of help with this. We do need, we project that our annual overhead, running a museum, is going to be about eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We are asking the city of Orangeburg to please consider, and this is a request, a formal request that I have contained in this information, we are asking you to consider putting us as a line item for four hundred thousand dollars annually to help support the, what we're doing with our museum. We feel that's a, a, an amount that, again, we will be able to, again, raise many of, much of the proceeds from the, the, the money, the income, the revenue streams that we have on the museum, in the museum, such as sa, sales of our artifacts, sales of our souvenirs, and we will hope to remain a free museum. We don't want to charge people. We found out through our research that ninety-five percent of the people that come into our museum, we don't charge them anything, they leave a donation anyway, so we have a money stream like that. But I want to thank you very much for the honor of presenting this information to you, and I'd like to give you a formal request in the form of this, if you'll let me approach the bench and drop. But thank you again very much, citizens of Orangeburg, and Mayor Butler and city council persons. Thank you very much for letting me make these presentations, and I come up thirteen minutes short.
All right.
Yeah, you did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Williams, we appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Okay, sorry. Good evening, Mayor Butler, council. Good evening to all of our.
Good evening.
Visitors. Counsel, for your consideration is a nomination to the Election Commission, Ms. Georgina, I'm sorry, Georgine Hightower. Her term will be ending at the end of the month, on March thirty-first, and Councilwoman Knotts has nominated her to serve another term that will end March thirty-first, twenty thirty-one, so it'll be an additional six-year term, and so you have that nomination before you for your consideration.
Okay, do, do anybody have? Make the motion.
Make the motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that we recommend Georgie, Ms. Georgie Hightower.
Okay. Second. Most have been made by Councilman Kit, and second by Councilman Strowman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, the next item for your consideration is a resolution that would allow the city to utilize hospitality tax funds to pay for expenditures for repairs to the Chamber of Commerce building for the damages that were caused in the November flood. As you all recall, in November of last year, we suffered a, really a catastrophic flood, particularly to the Edisto Garden area, and the Chamber of Commerce building sustained approximately four hundred thousand dollars in damage. Our assist, Assistant City Administrator Theresa Williams has been working diligently with FEMA to eventually get a reimbursement for those repairs. However, in order to go ahead and repair the building and not have to wait for those funds to come in, we're requesting that we utilize hospitality funds until we get the reimbursement from FEMA, and then we can reimburse the hospitality tax fund. So the resolution would allow us to do that at approximately four hundred thousand dollars. Four hundred thou, approximately, it could be a little bit more.
And, are there any discussions on, 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 on this item? Item number five, allowing the city to use the hospitality tax fund to repair, do some of the repairs at the Chamber of Commerce?
Sydney.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, you stated that the insurance does not cover?
No, sir. So the insurance, it, there was a pretty high deductible because the chamber building is located in a flood.
In its one.
Flood zone, yes. And so the insurance would not cover, so we have to rely on FEMA. And just for more specificity, we're looking at about seventy-two thousand dollars in, in water and electrical damage, twenty-five thousand dollars for content removal, and then three hundred and, about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in just general repairs to the building.
And for the councils, and, you know, the building belonged to us, it's our responsibility to get it fixed, you know, because we have to be good stewards over what we have in the city, so.
But you think you'll get the money from FEMA?
We, we certainly hope we'll get the money, and I cannot tell you, do you, Ms. Williams, do you know when possibly we can expect that?
We have just started the process, so it may take a while.
Yeah.
So there's no guarantee of funds or reimbursement from FEMA?
No guarantee, but I, I, I think that we certainly would qualify. But the longer we leave the building.
The more damage.
Unrepared, the more damage.
And just to clarify again on the insurance policy, you said the deductible was high, or just they denied the claim altogether?
The deductible is, I think, six hundred thousand? Six hundred thousand, so. Yes.
I move that we adopt the resolution to utilize the hospitality tax funds to pay for expenditures related to the repairs associated with the Chamber of Commerce building.
Motion has been made by Councilman Grievous.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council.
Okay, we have the first reading.
Yes, sir. The next item is first reading of an ordinance amending the city's zoning ordinance regarding tobacco, tobacco retail establishments, invoking the pending ordinance doctrine and providing for other related matters. This ordinance is related to primarily tobacco establishments that have vaping shops, or more commonly known as vaping shops. The Planning Commission met on February twenty-seventh and adopted, or passed a resolution that recommended approval of this amendment, but what this ordinance would do is, is basically, like I said, amend the zoning ordinance to restrict the, the density, the number of, of tobacco, or I should say vaping shops within city limits.
Okay, are there any discussion on this ordinance before we adopt it? Any discussion?
Sydney.
Yes, sir.
In reading the memo from the zoning committee, how far should a vaping company be from the church and also schools?
I'm going to defer to our city attorney to, to give you the specifics.
Mayor, members of council, I apologize, I'm a little hoarse tonight. The, the specifics of the zoning ordinance with respect to distances, excuse me, it is two thousand feet from a number, another establishment of the same type, that is, tobacco retail establishments could not be within two thousand linear feet of each other. It would be one thousand feet from a place of worship, an educational facility, or any establishment whose principal source of gross revenue was the distribution of alcoholic beverages. So those are a thousand feet from each other, and two thousand feet from any similar type of business to another tobacco retail establishment. And that's measured from the closest point of the property line, from whichever place we're talking about, that would be applying for that zoning use, to the existing place that we're talking about. So basically, corner to corner, or whatever the closest points are, that would be the measurement, linear distance.
All right. Does this require any future tobacco or vape establishment to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission before?
So there are a couple of aspects to the ordinance. The first one is zoning classifications in the city in which tobacco retail establishments would not be permitted at all. And those would basically be your residential, that's A1, A2, and A3, so the three types of residential districts would be office institutional, which is O1, and would be general business, which is B1. In addition, they would not be permitted in planned development districts, in historical conservation districts, or an airport compatibility district, which of course, the city only has one of those, at least right now. They would be permitted in a design overlay district, and I, and, and obviously, that's an additional overlay, which does go through a very extensive planning review process. And then the other places that it would be permitted with the restrictions that I just mentioned, and there are a few others, would be your central business district, which is B2, your neighborhood business district, which is B3, and your industrial, which is D1. When we talk about, when we talk about zoning, if the property is already zoned with an appropriate zoning for that use, it does not typically require additional Planning Commission or city council approval. So if, if, if a tobacco retail establishment were to show up, acquire property in B2, for example, and otherwise meet the requirements of distances and space of the facility versus acreage of the site, there would be no additional review. That's the idea behind making the text amendment, is if it fits, it fits. If it doesn't, then it doesn't. Obviously, there are other ways that city council could try to address this concern. You could have permissible uses with a special exception, or some other conditional requirements. Those are also ways in which the zoning, our zoning ordinance could be amended. But this would, as we understand it, this would address the principal concerns, which were largely residential and other similar types of areas where it's simply going forward would not be allowed. And then in those areas, and I say areas, zoning classifications where it would be allowed, it would be allowed if it met these distance and, and size requirements. And, and, and let me remind everyone, this is going forward. There is nothing in this zoning ordinance that would hinder an existing business. The only time that that would apply is if the text amendment were to be adopted and an existing tobacco retail establishment were to be destroyed essentially, or more than fifty percent destroyed, it would then be a non-conforming use, and at that point, it could not be rebuilt. But there is no intent in, in what is in this zoning text amendment to take any existing establishment and try to shut it based on the change.
Now, if the vaping company decides to move from one location to the next, say, for example, from Bratton Street to Chestnut?
So it, it's not company by company, it is the, it is like any other zoning ordinance. The text of the zoning ordinance at that point would control. So if the new location were properly zoned for that use, and the distances were met, then the company could move. If it, however, closed the current establishment, and it were no longer a conforming use on the existing site, it could not reopen in that location. So, so essentially, a, any existing location that becomes a non-conforming use, that is either closed, or, and I say closed, it could be closed because the business closes it, it could be closed because of some catastrophic event that destroys a portion of the business. Those would become non-conforming uses, and they could not be reopened or rebuilt, and rebuilt only is fifty percent or more. And that is true, again, that is true of any zoning change that the city makes, and that's not just the city, that is basically the way South Carolina law works. So that, e, even if it were a residential change, if, if the fringe, for example, of neighborhoods, as the city updates its comprehensive plan, if those zoning classifications change, as they often do as part of future use plans, you may have non-conforming uses that can continue, but once they stop, they cannot be expanded or rebuilt. That is, you can't take a, a non-conforming use and make it more non-conforming. You can't add to it, you can't rebuild it, and so in essence, that's what this is looking at, going forward, and anything that closes essentially, or has to be rebuilt, could not be rebuilt if it's non-conforming.
Did that answer that question?
Yeah.
Any more concerns?
Thank you for your presentation. Had we reached out to the existing vape shops and let them know where it's coming down the pipe?
I have not. And, and I don't know that the city, I was going to say, I don't know that the city typically.
I don't think you have to do that.
Well, I, I know it's not required, but I don't know that the typically, that, that the city, the city typically does that for any text amendment. Obviously, it is published in the notice, in the newspaper, there is a public hearing at the Planning Commission level, and then obviously, city council has three readings of its ordinance. But I'm not aware that the city, for a text amendment, sends out notices to any particular group of businesses or residences. If it were a map change, that's different, property has to be posted. But for text amendments, I'm not aware that the city ever does that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, if, if, no more questions, I'm going to read the ordinance. An ordinance amending the city's zoning ordinance regarding tobacco retail establishment, invoking the pending ordinance doctrine, and provided for other related matters there, matters, related matters. We'd like to have a motion, please.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance regarding tobacco retail establishment.
Um, most have been made by Councilman Kit, and second by Councilman Grievous, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have, the motion is carried, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Everett.
Mayor, I wanted to recognize the Fire Squad, that's a youth group that came before city council to speak to us last year about doing something about the vape shops in the city of Orangeburg, and members of the Fire Squad and their director are here.
Would y'all stand, please? They came before us about the vape shop. I hope in y'all minds we are making some leeway. Thank y'all so much for coming. Thank you for that. At this, Mr. Harley, do we have any matters pertaining to Department of Public Utilities?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, there are no items to be discussed.
Okay, thank you. Our executive session, we would, item seven, Malden and Jenkins CPA advisor personal matter, South Carolina Code, section thirty dash four dash seventy-eight one. And eight, and the second thing, receipt of legal advice added for grant appropriation. So, so we'd like to have a motion to go in the executive.
Make a motion, we go in executive session.
Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second motion.
Second by Councilman Kalu, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have. Eyes have, we're going to say good night to everyone, I don't think we'll be returning to open session. So thank you, and thank y'all for coming.